I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of Thursday, February 15, 2018. A little housekeeping, please, silence your phones and any electronic devices. If we have any blue slips on any item, please bring them to Ms. Jessica before the item comes up, please. They're in the back. We'll have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Dennis Scott.
Father, we thank you tonight for your grace and we just ask tonight that you humble our hearts in the most gracious way. We ask tonight that you help us with the wisdom that only comes from above as we continue to do the work of your people. We ask that you bless this body tonight, Father, for they have given their time to be able to just reach out to help their community. Father, we thank you tonight that you are here with us, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, roll call, please.
Yes, sir.
Here. Mr. Andrew Pott.
Mr. Andrew Pott, are you president?
Can I say president? That's what lived with me. Obviously, it belongs to tradition.
Mr. Brain was unable to attend the meeting this evening. Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Farnum?
Here.
Mr. Guidry?
Here.
Mr. Gillery?
Yeah.
Mr. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Latour?
Here.
Ms. Mayo?
Here.
Mr. McMillan?
Scott?
Here.
Mrs. Trimmie?
Here.
Vice President White?
Here.
And President Baer's?
Here. Thank you, ma'am.
Item number four, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane.
Mr. President, we have one special event permit. We recommend it be approved.
Can I have a motion about Mr. Guidry and a second about Mr. Collins? Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item number five, consideration of approving payment of all current invoices and advice regarding monthly budget to actual comparison. I have a motion about Mr. Andrew Pott.
Second.
And a second by Mr. White. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item number six, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated January 11, 2018. I got a motion by Mr. Gillery and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item number seven, take appropriate action on a request by the Division of Planning and Development to abandon and revoke the original dedication of an unnamed road in the 3200 block of East McNeese Street. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Wednesday, February 14, 2018, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted.
Moved to uphold.
Second. Got a motion to uphold by Mr. Andrew Pott and a second by Mr. Guidry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item eight, take appropriate action on a request by Hackberry Investments, II, LLC to rezone from agricultural and light industrial to general commercial to allow commercial development in the 7100 block of Highway 27 South in Ward 4. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Wednesday, February 14, 2018, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with stipulation, with conditions. I got a motion by Mr. Farnum to uphold, second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item nine, take appropriate action on a request by AMAC LLC to rezone from light industrial and agricultural, excuse me, to multifamily residential to allow multifamily development in the 5700 block of Cormier Road in Ward 7. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Wednesday, February 14, 2018, and voted 5, 4, and 3 against to recommend that the request be granted with conditions. Okay, I got a motion by Mr. Farnum to overturn planning and zoning and a second by Mr. Scott. Okay, we've got some, some blue slips on this item. Is the applicant here or AMAC? Is the applicant here or AMAC? Are there any speakers for item nine?
So we'll go to the opposition.
Okay, so our first one is...
Say again?
If there's nobody here to represent the applicant, then there's no need to have anybody speak against it since the motion's been made to overturn with a second.
Just call a roll call for the...
Mr. President, if I may, Mr. Andrew Pott's actually correct in this regard. You should open it up to the other jurors to see if there is any discussion among the jurors.
Are there any discussion by the juror? We have a roll call vote, please.
This will be a reverse roll call vote. The motion is to overturn the Planning and Zoning Board and to deny the request by AMAC. Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Trimmie?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Latour?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mr. Gillery?
Yes.
Mr. Guidry?
Yes.
Mr. Farnum?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pott?
Yes.
And Mr. Ebscher?
Yes.
The vote was unanimous to overturn.
Thank you. Item number 10, take appropriate action on a request by Travis Farley to rezone from agricultural to light commercial to allow commercial development at the northwest corner of Royer Loop and Highway 27 in Ward 6. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Wednesday, February 14, 2018, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with conditions.
Moved to overturn?
Got a motion to overturn planning and zoning by Ms. Trimmie.
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection?
Mr. President, I don't know if the applicant's here on that one as well.
Okay, is the applicant here for?
Yes.
Item 10.
Yes.
Have your name and address for the record, sir.
Ron Granger, 3543 Nersess Road in Lake Charles. Represent the clients, honor. I'm curious as to the reasons for the motion to overturn.
I'll be glad to.
Well, we don't, I wouldn't, we don't need to answer that question.
Mr. President, if...
He's here to make his presentation is what he's supposed to be doing.
And that's exactly right.
Mr. ...
Sorry.
We're here to hear your presentation.
Well, like I said, I'm really curious because I had spoken to Ms. Trimmie about a week ago, made her aware of the proposal.
Point of order, Mr. President, he needs to make his presentation. He's doing the same thing he was doing just a moment ago.
Would you please?
The presentation is basically as outlined in the Planning and Zoning. It's for approximately 3,000 square foot convenience store, well-lit, on this 10-acre tract that Mr. Farley owns on the corner of Royer Loop and Highway 27. That's basically the proposal. I was, I was told by the police jury that there was a dangerous, this was a dangerous area, that it's near a curve. The nearest curve is 3,400 feet away. That's 16, that's 16 city blocks. That's a distance from here to Interstate 10. I can make pretty good decisions in one or two blocks. This is 3,400 feet. I was told by the police jury that it was on a curve. There is no curve.
This is from the GIS system you passed around. I appreciate it.
I was told that there were, there were several calls and when I asked why, it was because that this thing was by, that the development was going to be by a curve, which is not the case. So I don't understand the opposition. And for whatever it's worth, I do a lot of work for these, this community that has either been involved, built or bought at least 24 stores in the last 10 years between Benton, Louisiana and Lafayette, Louisiana. They build these more or less stores, they're very first-class stores. There's a new one that was just built south of Iton on Begless. They're very first-class. They have lots of lighting.
Mr. Scott?
Now that he's mentioned the name, I do need to abstain from voting.
Mr. Farley, did you go before the Planning and Zoning Board and speak on this issue, sir?
I'm not Mr. Farley. I represent, I work for, I'm the real, I'm the agent, the realtor. Mr. Farley is in the back.
Did either of you go before the Planning and Zoning Board and speak on this issue?
We did not. I was here last night. There was no questions raised. It was unanimously approved. So I still fail to understand what the objection could be to this project. No one has told me.
Ms. Trimmie?
Well, I'm not going to really go into it.
She doesn't need to.
Right now, I don't need to.
Doesn't make any sense.
I made my motion and I hope my colleagues honor that.
Thank you. Mr. Landry?
Mr. Crane, do you have some type of a drawing of what this, I mean, he briefly described and told me that it's going to be nice and I'm scrolling through here. I see the property.
Yes, sir. The answer is yes. The package, the package was turned into the zoning and planning a month, a month ago.
Yeah, I'm talking to Mr. Crane.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is this all I have is a sketch? Yeah, that's the same stuff I'm looking at. The example?
Yes.
That looks terrible.
The site plan.
Right. And then the sketch of the site plan.
Right.
So that color picture right there, that's what it's going to look like?
Um, this is what they submitted.
Or would you believe that it's going to look?
What is a typical store that they build? So that's, that's what they're submitting.
Okay.
To show, to show an example of what that, what it may look like.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Any more discussion?
I'm sorry, no, Mr. Granger could probably be excused from the podium.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I didn't mean to interrupt, Mr. President. I'm sorry.
No worries. Do we need a roll call vote on this?
And, um, I can vote.
Go from... Yes. Please roll call vote.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to overturn planning and zoning and to deny the request to rezone. This will be a regular roll call. Mr. Ebscher?
No.
Mr. Andrew Pott?
No.
Mr. Brain is not here. Mr. Collins?
No.
Mr. Farnum?
No.
Mr. Guidry?
No.
Mr. Gillery?
The motion, the motion is...
What is the motion?
The motion is to overturn the Planning and Zoning.
Right. Yes means no.
Very, very good, Ms. Landry.
Mr. Gillery?
No.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mr. Latour?
Yes.
Ms. Mayo?
No.
Mr. Scott?
I need to abstain.
Abstaining, yes, sir.
Yes.
Mrs. Trimmie, yes. And Mr. White?
Yes.
The motion failed. Four yays, seven nays. So, continue discussion, I guess, right?
At this point, Mr. President, if you could entertain a motion to uphold or to allow the rezoning.
Mr. Landry?
Well, I mean, obviously, the next motion's going to be to, yeah, to uphold. But I'm going to tell you, being that there's going to be one there and you are going to approve this, that looked terrible. I mean, I thought, look, we need some stipulations. That, that should look better than that. I'm sorry, but that's just, I was not impressed by the picture, Mr. Crane, whatsoever. He can't, that guy's out of order. That's really getting old. You don't speak from the floor. And I'm not directing my questions to Mr. Granger. I'm speaking to Mr. Crane.
Yes, sir.
And Ms. Landry, if I may, certainly...
I would like to speak.
I understand that.
And he just...
Certainly, concerns, it may be a time to, to address additional items to this, to stipulations. I'd rather not do that on the floor. Obviously, this is just a rezoning matter. So it's just a land use at this point. But certainly, if there's, I would recommend deferral before we, if you have some concerns and need more information on this one.
I wouldn't allow that in my district, I can tell you. There's no way.
And right now, there's no motion on the floor.
Not looking like what they presented here tonight. I wouldn't want that in my district.
Right now, there is no motion on the floor.
Well, I understand. If that's the only way we can get there, then I move to defer for 30 days.
Second.
Got a motion to defer for 30 days by Mr. Landry and a second by Ms. Trimmie. Any discussion?
Why are we deferring?
So they can get with the staff to try to come up with what the design is exactly going to be. I mean, it's clear that it's going to be voted on and it's going to be passed. But being that these people in this neighborhood are going to have to live with this convenience to where it ought to be at least something that they're halfway proud of, that they, we don't have a whole lot to go by right there.
Are we not allowed to address the concerns of this jury?
One second, sir.
This doesn't understand.
Mr. Land, Mr. Andrew Pott?
The only, the only problem I have about deferring this thing is there's nobody here tonight to oppose the project. Now, if you had 10 of 5, 6 people here for this reason and that, I could understand that. But with nobody here to oppose it, I can't, I'm not going to vote to defer it. I just can't.
If I may. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pott. Mr. Landry?
Don't take this the wrong way.
No, I'm not.
But I represent people that sit home all the time because they don't feel like coming down here. Most people don't. And I put myself in those people's position and I'm trying to do it. If I live there, that's what I would want.
Mr. President, I think it's very unfair that I cannot address his concerns. They're unfounded.
Sir, we, we take turns.
He's out of...
Well, I'm asking for my turn, sir.
Stand by. Are you done, Ms. Landry?
He doesn't have to get a turn. That's up to you.
Mr. Guidry?
I think I'm finished for now.
Mr. Granger, we are, we are, we are trying to meet you on this issue, okay? We are, we're actually trying our best to meet you on this issue, but you can't keep being rude and interrupting while we're speaking and trying to carry on business for you to make your point.
Yes, sir. I'm just asking to address his concerns.
You continue to do that, then I think you're telling us what we need to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Granger?
And, Mr. President, if you're going to allow Mr. Granger to speak, it's only, right now, it's only a motion to defer. That's the only motion on the floor right now.
Correct. Thank you.
No speak?
You can.
I can?
Yes, sir.
I think it's a very unfair concern. This is a zoning, this is a zoning request. We're not architects. We turn in a package that fit the guidelines to rezone from agricultural to commercial. When we go to build a store, there's, there's a slew of criteria that we have to follow. There's setbacks. There's landscaping. So to look at a sketch, a typical sketch, to have a piece of property rezoned from agricultural to commercial, that's our objective of being here tonight. Not to give architectural details that we're not capable of doing when we go to a zoning meeting. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be required. We know what the criteria, we've built at least two dozen beautiful stores in this area. So it's unfair to say that this is not, that, that's critical at this point as far as where the trash bin's going to be located or how many parking places at this stage in the rezoning request. It baffles me as a parish taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Landry?
Mr. President, being that Mr. Granger evidently was speaking to me, what he doesn't understand is that we got one opportunity to get it right and it's right now because he needs something from us. He needs the zoning to be changed. Once we give him what he needs, he can pretty much build anything that he wants to there. The opportunity will be gone. So that's the reason that I'm addressing that now. And if they built a dozen beautiful stores, then that, by now, they ought to have a picture of exactly what it's going to look like. Because I'm sure they probably all look the same. And that may be why we got the picture we did because that is what it's going to look like.
Thank you, Ms. Landry. Mr. Andrew Pott?
Thank you, Mr. President. That's Mr. Crane. In layman's terms, where are we on this? I mean, I know you all approved it and just give me some more specifics. I mean, I...
Yes, sir. I don't know where we are.
Okay, so, um, right now, this property is not in a overlay district. It's not in an overlay zone that you have like on Nelson Road or Lake Street or in the Moss Block here.
I know where it is.
So, the criteria for someone to present to us, the staff, any kind of architectural details for, you know, upgrades on the building is not required at this particular location. I understand Mr., you know, Mr. Landry's point and wanting to know what that's going to look like, but as a staff, we're, we don't, we don't have any criteria right now for, for them to go on so they can show us, you know, what it may look like. So that, that's sort of where we stand. So the only thing that's required right now is for them to submit a site plan that basically shows a sketch of, you know, where the building's going to be located, where the parking's going to be located, any kind of setbacks that are required. Those are the minimum things that they have to provide to us.
So are we talking about a rezoning of a piece of property?
A rezoning of a piece of property. And we do put some stipulations in there that it does have to meet the site plan requirement, that they may have to get a drainage impact analysis or a traffic, you know, something from the, from the DOTD and, and those types of things.
They all, they all understand that.
It, yes, I hope so.
Okay. I yield back, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pott. Mr. Guidry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Wes, point of clarification. What is the closest house to this project?
Uh, let's see. I might have to pull it up here. I think there's a residence to the west of the site, just to the, on the backside of this particular property. And I'm not real sure how close it is. Hold on, let me pull it up here.
That's the nearest house to the west side of it.
Yeah, let's see. Uh, we have an aerial. Do you have any of this? Okay. Yes, sir. If you, if you look in your packet, there's an aerial photograph and just to the west of the property on Royer Loop, I believe there's a mobile home located to the west of there, if you see that.
Yeah.
That, that's the closest residence.
Okay.
From it, so. And of course, there, there are some residents around there to the north and to the, sort of north and east and on Bill Tally Road. And of course, if you go down High Hope Road, too, there's some residents there. But most of that property, the corner, the northeast corner on High Hope, it's zoned light industrial.
Okay.
And on the southeast corner is zoned general commercial, so.
Thank you, Wes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guidry. We just mentioned to him to not holler from the floor.
Travis Farley, 3700 Markentale Settlement Road, Benton, Louisiana. This piece of property in the trailer he's talking about is on the property and it's going to be removed from the property as far as that, if this goes through. Now, there is a house a little further west from that trailer that is close to the property. Okay? I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Thank you. So we have a motion to defer by Mr. Landry and a second by Ms. Trimmie. Any further discussion?
Roll call.
Roll. Let's have a roll call vote to defer for...
30 days.
30 days.
Yes, sir. This will be a reverse roll call vote this time. Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Trimmie?
Yes.
Mr. Scott is abstaining.
I'll abstain.
Thank you. Ms. Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Latour?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mr. Gillery?
Yes.
Mr. Guidry?
Yes.
Mr. Farnum?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pott?
No.
And Mr. Ebscher?
No.
Motion carried. Nine yeses and two noes.
Thank you. Can I address Mr. Landry? Yes, sir.
Still want my port of oil, okay?
Oh, no problem.
Item number 12.
As soon as we walk out the door, I love you again. It's good.
Item number 11, take appropriate action on a request by Prairie Land Company to rezone from agricultural to light commercial to allow commercial development in the 8500 block of Gulf Highway in Ward 3. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Wednesday, February 14, 2018, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with conditions. Moved to uphold.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Landry to uphold, second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 12, take appropriate action on a request by Pierre's Ridge LLC to rezone from agricultural to single-family residential to allow residential development in the 6700 block of Lake Street in Ward 3. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Wednesday, February 14, 2018, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted. Had a motion by Mr. Scott to uphold and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item 13, consideration of adopting an ordinance, rescinding ordinance number 7,014 due to the adjudicated property being redeemed. Had a motion by Mr. Andrew Pott and a second by Mr. Ebscher. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item 14, consideration of adopting an ordinance, amending ordinance number 1432 to approve the name change of the Imperial Calcasieu Regional Planning and Development Commission, MCOW, to the Southwest Louisiana Regional Planning Commission with all goals and responsibility of said five parishes, Regional Planning Commission remaining the same. Had a motion by Ms. Mayo and a second by Mr. Scott. and a second by Mr. Scott. Had a discussion by Mr. Guillory.
Yes, I just wanted, Ms., uh, the lady, just to explain the reason why we're doing the name change so that people would know.
Ms. Swallow?
He got it. If she can answer that, then I don't have a question.
Um, we're, we've been-
Please state your name and-
I'm Cherie Swallow. I'm at 4310 Ryan Street, Suite 330 in Lake Charles. I'm sorry about my voice. We've been MCOW since 1972, Imperial Calcasieu Regional Planning and Development Commission. I've, I've been here about almost two years. Some of the questions I get from people is, they hear Calcasieu, they hear Imperial, they go, now what do you do? Southwest Louisiana Regional Planning Commission really embraces our five parishes. I understand the Imperial Calcasieu history. I have a history degree. I get it. I think it's kind of cool, but as we move forward, we've got a lot of things coming. We're changing kind of some of the direction. I think just making it easy for the public to understand Southwest Louisiana RPC is to the point. And everybody understands that it's for our region. And, and we know that it's not just Calcasieu Parish, that we love you guys, but we want all five parishes to feel inclusive. It's updating.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any further discussion? Mr. Scott?
The executive board, this has been being discussed for several months now, and as the executive board has approved this through the full board of MCOW, you know, we just feel like it's the right time to make that move. And she is correct, you know, the stigma of the word MCOW to make it, to be clear, has, you know, it's been hard to retain members. But over the past two years, through Ms. Swallow and her work with the new staff and continuing to really reach out, there's been more and more people coming on board. And so we need that entire region to continue to work together. And if the name change is kind of moving that direction, we feel like it's the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farnum?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I'll, I'll direct them to Dennis. I know at one point, the, the membership was dropping off and there almost wasn't any municipalities outside of Calcasieu that were still involved in it. And what I'm hearing is that that's starting to pick back up. And, and they've joined back in and bought back into the system.
I'll just say yes. And save Ms. Cherie's voice, because she's having a roll call.
Yeah, I know, I know. She's-
But she's, they've done a great-
I know you're on the board, so.
Jennings has rejoined, Maryville, DeRider, so Bow regard parish, so they're well on their way to regaining some traction.
It's really good to hear, so I support that.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. So we got, any objections? Motion carries. Item number 15. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the coastal master plan for Calcasieu Parish. Ms. Cormier.
Lori Cormier, planning, the Division of Planning and Development. The purpose of this Calcasieu Parish Coastal Master Plan is that we realize that coastal Louisiana, including Calcasieu Parish, faces increasing threats from coastal flooding. This plan will help promote and facilitate a more sustainable and resilient Calcasieu Parish through the identification and implementation of coastal restoration and protection projects. The plan identifies potential projects should federal, state, or local funding become available for coastal restoration projects. The Calcasieu Parish Police Jury funded the plan by utilizing money received from the Deep Water Horizon Economic Damage Settlement, and Athens North America was hired as a consultant to begin creating the plan, along with the Division of Planning and Development and staff members. Multiple stakeholders were, meetings occurred in August and September of 2016 at the beginning of the process. And the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury hosted a meeting with major landowners that included projects that were solicited from landowners and their representatives. The plan includes 14 projects and fact sheets, including maps of the projected areas or the project areas. The plan also includes a prioritization matrix to assist the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury in determining the priority coastal restoration projects. And just some examples of the criteria are that the project readiness, the consistency with the Louisiana Comprehensive Master Plan for Coastal Louisiana, and the increased environmental value and ecological function of the habitat. The plan can be viewed anytime online at the Calcasieu, at www.cppj.net. The next steps for the coastal plan for Calcasieu is that the parish will continue to provide a voice for Southwest Louisiana related to the need for coastal restoration and protection. The plan will also help the parish determine and prioritize potential coastal restoration projects to pursue with Calcasieu's share of the Gomesa funding. The plan will be reviewed on an annual basis to ensure it's up to date and consistent with current state and regional incentives or initiatives. And a formal update will be performed every five years, which will include seeking public input for potential projects and a review of funding That's it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Do we have any discussion? Moves to receive report.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont to receive report, second by Mr. Landry.
Mr. President, can we just clarify that we need a motion that actually, excuse me, adopts a resolution to approve the plan?
Move.
Second.
Oh, you did?
Motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Ms. Mayo to receive, to adopt the resolution. Any objection? Item carries. Item 16. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving an agreement between the police jury, the City of Lake Charles, Recreation District Number One of Ward III, and the Southwest Louisiana Convention and Visitors Bureau for cost sharing in the design and construction of artificial turf on a total of nine existing baseball and softball fields within the district. Got a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Farnum.
Actually, I, I think I seconded it.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, we have discussion. Mr. Farnum?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think, I'm all, I'm a big fan of collaborative efforts, and, and this is a really good thing to happen. I see a whole lot of different folks that are on this. And I just, I just want to make sure that the same collaborative effort is upheld in the future when other entities come to us. 'Cause we, we could be opening Pandora's box, but it may be a good box to open. So I support this.
Thank you, Mr. Farnum. So we have a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Ms. Trimmie. Any further discussion? Any more, any objection? Motion carries. Item 17. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving updates to the multi-jurisdictional agreement between the six parish CEO consortium of Allen, Bow regard, Calcasieu, Cameron, Jeff Davis, and Vernon parishes for the services provided as, as a result of the funds allocated through the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Got a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection?
I had one thought. Since the MCOW is now available to be used, it would be much shorter and maybe they could rename this organization.
Good idea.
It's just a thought.
I agree. Thank you for sharing that.
It might work.
So we, any, no objections? Motion carries. Item 18. Take appropriate action on bids received by the parish purchasing agent. Item A. Interco, intra-coastal park improvements project, camping, electrical upgrades, pavilion, and wharf improvements. The project architect recommends that the low bid in the amount of $519,000 of Gunter Construction Incorporated be accepted. Item B. Sign faces, ready mixed concrete, and crushed stone. I got a motion by Mr.-
So move.
Move on 18, all bullets. Motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Farnum. A discussion. Mr. Andrew Pont?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank staff for moving forward with this intercoastal park improvements. It's been long overdue, and I appreciate it. And there are gonna be a lot of people who use that park, appreciate it more than I do. And been a long time coming, Allen, and I appreciate what y'all done. And now you're back.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pont. So, any further discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Uh, Mr. Scott?
Yeah, just a quick personal privilege. I know Mr. Brewcard's out back. If he'd go ahead and come in right quick. Just go ahead and give him a send-off, 'cause I know tomorrow's his last day on the job here in the parish. So, just take your time. It's your last day. We're good. Just a personal privilege.
Still on the clock?
On behalf of Mr. Bream, he couldn't be here, and myself, you know, we for sure want to thank you for all the help you've been on, all the traffic issues we have, whether it's road building or right of ways, whatever. You know, I appreciate always getting the phone call back within minutes of us calling, whatever the situation was. You've always been on top of it. Not always gave me the answer I wanted, but you did give me an answer. So that's always better than not calling me back. So, thank you. Make sure the guy who's taken up your spot, make sure he knows he needs to call right back.
Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farnum?
Thank you. You've been a tremendous help throughout the years. Every, every time, there's always a quick response. And, and like Dennis said, it might not always been the one I was wanting to hear, but it was always quick. And very true, going right to the point. So I appreciate all your work that you've done here, and good luck in the future.
Thank y'all. I really appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity. So, it's been, it's been a pleasure, and I've, I've really enjoyed it. I've, I've enjoyed getting to know everybody here, and I'm, I'm really gonna miss the place. People that, people that work here don't, now that I'm on my way out, I don't think they really realize what a great place it is, 'cause I'm really gonna miss it. And so, I really do appreciate it. Thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to return y'all's phone calls.
You did them well.
Well, for your service.
Thank you.
True to turn.
Second.
Second.
Third.